On Friday.
Two weeks ago, I was like, we'll be screened if they close. And now they've already stopped.
Yeah, they still have their clientele until.
Let's go about business.
We'll talk to you.
Yeah. We're calling this meeting to order. This is a city council regular meeting. We're in Mon County Commission Chambers at two forty-three High Street. It's Tuesday, March nineteenth. It's a little bit after seven P. M. We're calling this meeting of the Morgantown City Council to order and ask the clerk if she would please call the roll.
Yes, Deputy Mayor Vuganam?
Present.
Bill Kueke?
Wait a minute, I have to find the camera. Present.
Wheezy Michael? Danielle Trumbull? Here. Dave Harshbarger?
Here.
Brian Butcher?
Here.
Mayor Celine?
Here. Now we'd all stand for the pledge. We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the minutes. We have two sets of minutes this evening. We have March fifth, twenty twenty-four special meeting minutes and March fifth, twenty twenty-four regular meeting minutes. We usually approve these up in census.
Yes.
Are you good?
Yep.
All right. They stand approved. Public hearings. Item A is an ordinance providing for the zoning reclassification of certain parcels of real estate in the first ward of the city of Morgantown, Tax District Nine, Tax Map forty-eight A, parcel twelve, commonly known as fourteen thirty-three Dorsey Avenue from an R-one single-family residential district to a B-two Service Business District, amending Article thirteen thirty-one of the Planning and Zoning Code of the City of Morgantown, as shown in the exhibit here to attach and declared to be a part of this ordinance as if the same were fully set forth herein. We're going to open this public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? We're going to close this public hearing and move to the next one. Item B is an ordinance adopting the annual budget for the general fund and coal severance fund of the city of Morgantown for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four to twenty-five. We're going to open this public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none, we're going to close this public hearing and move to the next. Item C, an ordinance regarding Block Three of the Brock and Anderson addition to the city of Morgantown, annuling existing six-foot alley and confirming lot configuration and road revisions that set forth on June nineteen twenty-four plat of said addition. We're going to open this public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak? And we're going to close this public hearing. Item D, an ordinance annuling a twelve-foot wide right-of-way extending from University Avenue and the boundary between parcels ninety-three and ninety-six of Tax Map twenty-eight, First Ward District. We're going to open this public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak? Now we're going to close this public hearing and move on to unfinished business. Item A, consideration of approval of a second reading of an ordinance providing for the zoning reclassification of certain parcels of real estate in the first ward of the city of Morgantown, Tax District Nine, Tax Map forty-eight A, parcel twelve, commonly known as fourteen thirty-three Dorsey Avenue from an R-one single-family residential district to a B-two Service Business District, amending Article thirteen thirty-one of the Planning and Zoning Code of the city of Morgantown, as shown in the exhibit here to attach and declared to be a part of this ordinance as if the same were fully set forth herein. And the first reading was second month, sixth day of twenty-four. And this would be, we'd ask our city attorney if he would touch on this.
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance would rezon property on Dorsey Avenue from the current R-one zoning designation to the B-two Service Business District category. As you can see on the map attached to the proposed ordinance, the adjoining properties to one side of this parcel are zoned B-two. The other adjoining properties within the city are R-one zoning designation and the surrounding properties on two sides are outside of city limits. This ordinance comes to city council with a recommendation from the Planning Commission to approve the zoning amendment and was delivered to the Planning Commission by petition of the property requesting for this zoning change to be made. The Planning Commission's report was previously presented to council at its committee of the whole by Development Services Director Jaeger and ordinance was passed on, passed by council on first reading. If council has any questions, I'd be happy to address this.
Let's have a motion and then we can ask questions.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay. And then we would entertain any questions.
My first question is, do they ever express what they were trying to rezon it for?
I'm not aware if they did or not. And I don't know if anybody knows through the proceedings of the Planning Commission. One thing I would say is that when council makes changes to the zoning ordinance and when the Planning Commission makes recommendations about changes to the zoning ordinance, best practice is to look at the range of uses in the proposed district and make your decision based on that rather than an applicant's representation about their intended use of the property because they're not limited to that and future uses are not contingent on that as well. Yeah. B-two Service Business District is sort of the city's most intense business district that's not industrial or manufacturing. So the most types of uses are permitted in that district.
That's where I had, that was my interpretation. That's why I have concerns now, having the chance to walk through the property. After like walking through it and seeing how close it is and the only access being by way of the school in terms of the initial parking lot and Dorsey, because I know that the argument was made about there being retail behind it. But the access for those like the, what is it, Dollar General?
The Family Dollar that will now be closing.
Their access is by way of Green Bag and not by way of the road that runs in conjunction with the houses and the schools. So I do have safety concerns in that regards for the kids in the area. But I also have concerns more specifically for the traffic too that will build up, considering that that is a very busy area in the morning and I don't quite understand what it is they're trying to do there. But if it is pretty much available to anything under a B-two short of industrial park, right? The potential is there for.
Yeah, I mean, there is a, there's a list of uses permitted in the, in the B-two district that includes many business types. Probably the most business types. All the districts have different features. So like the B-five district, the shopping center district has larger type uses and many of the same options.
So I know that I had voted yes previously, but I would like to express that I've had more time to obtain more information on it and now I do have a considerable amount of concerns in regard.
Do you know if the access to that property could be from Dorsey?
The, I'm sorry, can you explain?
Your concern, if I understand it, is the access on Lucky Lane into that property would be by the school. And it also borders Dorsey. And I'm just wondering, did you, did you find additional information that the property could not be entered from Dorsey?
The only entrance way is on Lucky Lane.
The building itself is up against.
It's on a hill.
Well, but I mean, I doubt that building's going to stay.
Yeah, there'd have to be obviously a new egress built in order for it to access.
Which if they got rid of the building, now we're looking at a considerable amount of construction and relatively busy interchange area, intersection. Still leaving me, I would still find concern with it.
I expressed concern during both the Planning Commission meeting and the first reading of this about some of the uses that are allowed in B-two and how appropriate they are for this area. And time and time, I guess just the two times, I was told that the lot size would really dictate what could be built there or what it could be used for. But I mean, there is vacant property around there that could, I mean, if they wanted to, they could buy the old Atomic Grill and then, you know, we could have a giant hotel right there next to the school. Or it was just announced this week that the Family Dollar behind here that, that is zoned B-two already is going to be closing. So property is likely going to be doing some shifting. And I still have great concerns about how, how this would affect that area and that neighborhood. And right now, the, the access is off of Lucky Lane. Even if it were off of Dorsey, I was also quoted the, the comprehensive plan that says this area is appropriate for like corridor, mixed-use development. But in my mind, the corridor that we're talking about is Green Bag Road, not Dorsey.
That, that part, I don't mean to interrupt.
No, 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 please.
But that part of Dorsey is, is narrow as it is.
Yeah, and it's on a hillside and.
It's difficult driving to begin with. So when you add in.
And who knows how it's going to be when there's a roundabout there.
And when you increase access, that's another conversation. But when you increase access or increase people trying to access an area right there that's already heavily trafficked in the morning and in the afternoon. I mean, when I don't like going to, I don't like driving down towards Saberton after five because that light backs up in every direction. I'd rather take the interstate.
So what was the vote at the Planning Commission level? Just like here the first time around, I was the only one who voted no.
I also voted like Joe, I voted yes, but after looking into it a little bit more, I'm not sure this is something I want to vote for.
What is, what's, what is this parcel's size?
That would have been included in the staff report, which would have been at the first or rather than, that's the first reading, but probably at your second February meeting. It is not included in your packet of materials tonight.
With the roundabout going into place, that property being zoned R-one is, I mean, it's not going to be a desirable R-one.
I, I agree. And also, you know, there are businesses along through there. They've had businesses through there with the same kind of access problems. You have two structures that were built, one of them containing the Dollar, whatever, Family Dollar store. But right across the street, you have an accountant, you have people who are selling insurance. There's residential there. It's rather dense in, in, in that development there. Well-established old apartments. And we're going to build a, whether we like it or not, or whether the school bus drivers like it or not, apparently we're going to build a roundabout in that location. I don't think that R-one is the highest use for that property. And I can't see any reason why we would. You go further down, Green Bag Road, there's all kinds of businesses too. I don't understand the objection to this and I will vote in favor.
My objection is just the access route. That's, that's, that's where my concern lies.
I appreciate that. But, but also too, right across the street from it, you have people who are pulling in two businesses. I don't know what kind of business they're going to put in there. And, and I don't know that that's our prerogative, to be quite truthful.
I, I agree. I, I was just kind of curious if there was any mention of it to try to ease my mind, but because I do want to see, I do want to see that building be used.
Yeah.
I would love to see, I mean, all the buildings. I'm disappointed to hear about the Family Dollar. But with that said, with no real information, I have a hard time leaning away from my, my stance on this. But with that said, with no real information, I have a hard time leaning away, uh, from my, my stance on it.
It's hard because...
Assistant City Manager would like to...
Hello, pardon. Pardon this thing in my face.
Um, just for, uh, Council's consideration, any type of modification to the site would require, uh, plan reviews that still go through the Development Office. And, uh, if there's any kind of, uh, change in the, the property, that would look at driveway entrances, um, offsets, uh, kind of impact, uh, everything else that is kind of within that normal site plan review.
Offset's are you meaning, um, setbacks?
Yes, so like for the type of businesses.
Yeah.
So everything else that's in our planning code, um, still is part of the review process. And so, um, everything from how the fire department to access, uh, a site to where, you know, the closest fire hydrant is to, uh, how many parking spots you have, all of those things are taken into consideration whenever there is, um, kind of like the change of use and certificate of occupancy process for actually having a, a development of that site. So I did just wanna make sure that, um, Council was aware it's a, a process that that part tends to happen a little bit more internal to staff, so, um, just for your consideration.
So there'd be more limitations on what can be done there?
There would be a full review, uh, from a slew of people of, of anything that were to be done there.
I'll just say there are other businesses nearby and across the street, but there's a reason that the city has zoning and that's not within the city, so it's not like we could tell them not to put their businesses there despite the fact that it's not the best area.
Aren't they just houses too?
Right, they're, yeah.
With businesses inside them, yeah.
Yeah, those are two businesses.
They're not necessarily a, a, a large business that could be built in the B2.
Someone could also put housing in the B2, right? I mean, some type of housing.
I seriously doubt, you know, that, uh, we'll see that develop as an R1 period. So I, I think, again, highest and best use in an area that is, um, uh, I remember, you know, the activities that, uh, 705 caused in terms of development as it was put in. It's hard to project, but I think the better use for this at this moment is to see if we can't get some, a practical use rather than let it decay. I don't know whether, if that's satisfying or not. In a, in a more perfect world, I think we would be building what we want, where we want it. All we can do is try to provide fertile ground for something that might be good and be cautious about what happens afterwards as we, we can be with the permits and the reviews that we do have in place.
I, I would agree. I would hate to see us negatively impact potential economic opportunity there by keeping it at R1, which it won't, it, it will decay.
Nothing will happen, yeah. Can I, what is the property across the street where, like, the farm and stuff is? Do we know what, what zone is?
That's the zone, that's, that's city. It's county.
I think that's correct. I, I don't believe that's what...
That's the Wild West.
What about like, the Wild West? Even over, like, towards where Mub is across Green Bag there, like, I don't know where the city line specifically is right there, but...
We do take in Mub, I believe, along with the, the old mall.
Yes, and the, and the mall is a, uh, I believe it's the B5 Shopping Center District. The parcel, the parcel where the, the Utility Board Office building sits is a part of a very large parcel including White Park, so, so probably also...
That's far away.
Wilson and, and FedEx, is that part of our, uh, city or not, or is that just outside the city?
Well, this is...
I believe that's outside.
There are several zones along that. There is an immediate area, the, the B2 next to the R1, uh, the B1 district, which is kind of catty corner to that. Uh, the mall is B5 and, uh, across from the mall, kind of near White Park, is B1. Uh, and then most of where White Park and, um, kind of, and Tech Mississippi going up that way is R1A.
So there is, and I'm not, I just want everyone to know I'm not crazy. The farm is, is inside the city and it's zoned B1. Here's Green Bag and Kingwood. I'm not crazy. And it's B1, so I think that it wouldn't necessarily be spot zoning to, to say that B1 is a better use of that property that's not along a corridor than a B2 is, but that's...
I'm inclined to get this property back into reuse. I...
Why, I am curious, why was it, uh, brought to Planning Commission as B2 as opposed to B1? Any reasons given?
Not that I recall.
It's probably the request of the applicant.
They, it offers the most uses, I'm su, I'm su, I don't wanna speak on behalf of the applicant, but...
There are some benefits for B2. Certainly, the, the one disagreeable one that we found in, when we were looking at it for Richwood was, uh, the height of the buildings. I seriously doubt if anybody's gonna come in and put a large tall building right next to a roundabout, but crazier things have happened.
It's also not a really huge lot.
I don't know. I'm reading, I've, I've read through this staff report a couple times. Can't seem to find what the lot size is.
Uh, Councilor Butcher, the, the lot size in the, the staff report, at least in the January committee of the whole packet, was reflected as zero point eight nine acres, which, according to my internet searching skills, is a, a little over thirty-eight thousand square feet, but no guarantees.
That's good enough for me, thank you.
So we're not gonna see major development, no paths coming in there, any of that?
The site would not be large enough for a planned unit development, that's correct.
But if we rezoned it, made part of the other properties surrounding it?
What other properties?
Something like the Atomic Grill area and then the Family Dollar and all that stuff. It would all be zoned the same, is that correct?
Yeah, what if they end up selling to the people that own Family Dollar and then we get something huge and awful?
Again, that, this, we can't talk in terms of what ifs. So with the information that I'm being presented, uh, based on where we are at this juncture in terms of the school and the houses that are across the street, I'm not comfortable with moving, jumping B1, going straight to the B2 to open up the most possibilities, good or bad. Because for all I know, they could be wanting to build a bounce house, which would be awesome. But needless to say, I, my fingers...
I think a recreation facility can be built in B1. Like, I don't know.
Maybe a bounce house deal would be then, I guess.
Am I correct in stating that there's no setback required under a B2?
Uh, the, the setbacks in the, the B2 district are fifteen-foot front setback, a thirty-foot maximum front setback, uh, five-foot minimum side setback, um, and twenty feet on any side where access drives are located, and a forty-foot minimum rear setback. That's, uh, section thirteen forty-seven point oh four.
Oh, I'm looking at B4, that's why.
Yeah. That makes sense.
So if you look at the, uh, what's included in your packet, it has a feet. So if you wanna figure out what the forty-foot would be, it has a scale on it. So you can see kind of what the footprint of the building would look like.
Oh, I see what you're saying, Jenny, thank you.
And presumably they would want...
That's with setback.
Some parking. Pardon?
So that's with setback?
I'm just saying, if you wanted to figure out, you said forty, forty feet in the back?
That's correct.
So the, the footprint, you know, would be inside that.
Okay. Our minimum parking requirements are dependent on what goes there, correct?
Those are dependent on use, yes.
So, are there any other questions? Um, does anyone have any suggestions that might provide guidance to your other members? I'm likely to vote in favor of it, um, because I'm wanting it to be not empty. And I think that, um, as they told you with the Planning Commission, it's likely that, uh, the setbacks and whatever parking they needed would mean that it would be a small, it would not be as large of a building as if it were a larger lot.
Well, I sure hope my neighbor's house doesn't end up empty for a long time to see what we would be willing to rezone that to so it didn't just sit there.
So, um, with regard to Lucky Lane, that is a very valid concern and so if people are wanting to vote, however they're wanting to vote, they should do so.
Its prior use was a school.
Was it a little school? It was offices for the school.
Yeah, so I mean, it's not as though...
It was previously owned by the BOE, I mean.
It's actually a pretty charming little building.
The owners have bought it already.
With a really great apple tree that makes apples so bigger.
No, the new owners.
Does, right on the side of the BOE auctioned.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Crab apples or regular?
Pardon?
Crab apples or...
No, no, it's both sides, nice apples. All right.
I, just, Joe, has, have you heard things from your neighbors? What kind of conversations been had? I just wanna hear more from our first school safety concern.
Person that's in charge and he had also expressed concerns. In terms of the neighbors, that's more of a school area. Like, I have talked to parents and stuff like that whose kids do go to school there. It's, 'cause it won't affect, to me, it's not so much affecting the neighbors directly. It will affect them indirectly in relation to traffic. It'll affect them indirectly in relation to the school that they send their kids to. It'll affect them indirectly in the morning traffic and the afternoon. I know that it was school offices, uh, but those are, you park and you stay at work. You're not in and out.
Well, it's hard to predict what kind of traffic you're gonna have without knowing the use of the building.
Right, and, I mean, that's the good and the bad, right? So my, my, I'm gonna, I'm going to err on the side of caution is where I am at this time.
I assume worst-case scenario.
That's where I'm at at this current moment in regards to the rezoning.
Okay, well, I appreciate everybody's thoughtfulness. It's just, um, I, I'm not as uncomfortable with the circumstances as apparently some others are. Uh, I'm still in favor of it.
So are we ready for the clerk to call the roll? Please call the roll. Yes. Deputy Mayor Bougonum?
No.
Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
No.
Danielle Trumbull?
No.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
No.
Mayor Celine?
Yes.
For three, it, it does not pass. All right. On the second page now.
Uh-huh.
We sure are. It just keeps moving along. Consideration of approval of a second reading of an ordinance annuling a twelve-foot wide right-of-way extending from University Avenue to the boundary between parcels ninety-three and ninety-six of Tax Map Twenty-Eight, First Ward District. The first reading was three, five, twenty-four. And, um, also we'd like to ask our city attorney a little bit about this one.
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance would annul any potential public right-of-way uh, existing at a reserved twelve-foot private way over a parcel of property adjoining Don Knotts Boulevard. This is property the city is in the process of purchasing. Uh, there's been no dedication of this private right-of-way to public use. Uh, but as mentioned at the last meeting before Council, the way did appear on, uh, one or more county tax maps at some point. And so just to, uh, kind of clear up the record and make sure there's no confusion or question about that, this ordinance is presented for Council's consideration to, uh, annul any potential public way that, uh, could have been established or claimed over that parcel. Uh, we recommend Council adopt the ordinance.
Is there a motion and then we'll have discussion?
Move to approve. Second.
Thank you. And then, um, is there any discussion on this? All right, hearing none. If you'd please call the roll. Yes. Deputy Mayor Bougonum?
Yes.
Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes. Passes unanimously. Now we're on to the public portion, which shall be subject to rules.
I have boards and commissions.
Oh, pardon me, boards and commissions.
Oh, never mind, it's further down. We need, I think we need to...
No, it's not twice. It's, it's item F.
It's item C online.
Yeah, it's item C online.
Oh.
Well, but they have this one specifically further down.
Oh, the one you're looking for.
The one I was looking for.
All right, we are back to the public portion, which shall be subject to rules established, no, good to keep things, keep things on the up and up. Rules established by Council. And, yep, and adopted by resolution. So we're gonna open this public portion. And, um, not seeing, uh, anyone who seems to be interested in the room, we're gonna, pardon?
Can I just make a quick comment? I think the printed agendas that were maybe handed out, the one online is correct. There is some confusion about maybe the printed agenda because things are not all in the same place. So, just...
They're not in the same place.
For those watching at home, you have the correct...
On the printed agenda, it appears that we skipped over the budget, but I think it is in a different place on your agenda. Uh, but for the, the clarity of the people gathered here today, I think it's just gonna come in a different part of the agenda.
So for those watching at home, if you are following along on the online agenda, you are right where you need to be.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sure they are.
They're waiting with bated breath. All right, we are gonna close the public portion and now we're gonna move to the consent agenda and, uh, further on down, we're gonna look at some other items, so.
We will figure it out.
Just so you guys know, we have twenty viewers right now, so there's twenty people at home.
Watching us flounder. Pretty, pretty exciting about that. All right. Hello, twenty people at home. We're now doing the consent agenda, uh, consent agenda. Item A, uh, consideration of approval of a second reading of an ordinance adopting the annual budget for the General Fund and Coal Severance Fund in the city of Morgantown for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. The first reading was three, five, twenty-four. Item B is consideration of approval of second reading of an ordinance regarding Block Three of the Brock and Anderson addition to the city of Morgantown and nulling existing six-foot alley and confirming lot config, configuration and road revisions as set forth on June, um, nineteen twenty-four plat of said addition. The first reading was three, five, twenty-four. These are both items on the consent agenda. If anyone is wishing to, um, we are going to approve them as a whole. If there's anyone that's wishing to pull something off of it, please let me know. And otherwise, um, is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Thank you. And then, and if the clerk would please call the roll. Deputy Mayor Bougonum?
Yes.
Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes. Consent agenda passes unanimously. Now we're on to new business. New business, item A is consideration of approval of first reading of an ordinance amending fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four annual budget of the city of Morgantown. It's shown in the revised budget attached here too. Made a part of this ordinance, says the same applies to the general fund. Is there a motion to appro, uh, a motion, pardon me?
Move to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Um, are there any questions or comments? All right.
We have our Director of Finance, Mayor, if we perhaps have him just...
Director of Finance. Director of Finance, would you like to speak a little on the subject?
Brief update, please.
Since this is a large item, an important item.
Yeah, thank you, council. As you mentioned, this is 2324, the current year that we're in. Just some maintenance, ensure that we're in compliance and do not have any budget overages by the time we get to the end of the year. Suggesting we revise a couple of the revenues, mainly the gas and oil severance tax. It came in a lot higher than what we had predicted. So, we're going to add, or suggesting to add $150,000 to the gas and oil severance tax, and then another $50,000 to BNO to bring it up to a $14 million level. On the expense side, suggesting to add $15,000 to the mayor and council departments. And that is to cover some participation in some training and conferences. Suggesting to add $50,000 to city manager and $100,000 to building inspection. And this is for the new city work software. This really should have been part of the carryover that we did in July. So, that was missed, and we're including it now, those software costs. Suggesting $15,000 to the human resource department. This is to cover some additional recruiting costs due to some high-level open positions within the city. And then also to cover some of the overtime from the pay lossity, their new software implementation. Recycling center going, suggesting to add $8,200. And that is the remainder of the West Virginia REAP grant from last year. And then, just a minor tweak to the engineering department for some items that looks like might come in over budget at the end of the year. And then, finally, the difference between the two, just addition to the contingency line to make it all balance. Again, just some annual maintenance. More than likely, we'll have one more revision before the end of the year as well. But this will cover some of the items that we're getting really close to being over budget.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Okay. Thank you and your staff and everyone else in the city for putting this all together on time, and here we are. So, do we have, we've had the motion to approve? And now, the clerk could call the roll?
Yes.
Mayor Buggonham?
Yes.
Bill Koweki?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes, passes unanimously. Item B is consideration of approval of a resolution approving the 2024-2029 Capital Improvement Plan. And if our budget director would, our finance director would speak on this?
I don't really have anything to add to this one. It's been circulating for, I believe, about a month now. Will try my best to answer any questions that you may have regarding the CIP plan.
Why don't we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. And then, any questions or concerns? I like this idea of looking out into the future.
I ask my questions during the budget meetings.
Yep, we're good. You're not required to ask questions unless you actually have them at this point. All right, if the clerk would please call the roll. Yes, Deputy Mayor Buggonham?
Yes.
Bill Koweki?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes, passes unanimously. Item C, consideration of approval of a resolution approving the 2024-2025 budgets for the City of Morgantown's Capital Escrow Fund, Municipal Airport Fund, Municipal Sales and Use Tax Fund, and Arts and Cultural Funds, including the Met and the Hazel Ruby Theater, right? No, HR, pardon?
Hazel Ruby McQuain Park.
Okay, good. They've been calling it other things, too, but that's, that's the original. Wonderful.
That's how it's listed in our general ledger.
Yes. So, if you would again, come to the podium.
Yeah, do not have anything to add. It's, it's been out there for a while. But again, we'll take any questions that you all have regarding these six budgets, I believe.
Could we have a motion, and then we can have a discussion?
Move to approve. Second.
Thank you. And then, any discussion?
Okay.
We also ask questions about this during budget meetings.
I, I'm, I'm good with that. I just don't want anyone, I don't want the 20 people at home thinking we don't ask questions. We've already had meetings about this.
We've asked a lot of questions, this is where we're-
Yeah, we, this was presented at the committee of the hall. We had individual meetings. This has been proverbial dead horse meeting.
All right. So, if you would please call the roll. Deputy Mayor Buggonham?
Yes.
Bill Koweki?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Two of them are sitting here.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes. Passes unanimously. Item D, consideration of approval of a resolution approving and authorizing the submittal to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, substantial amendment to the fiscal year 2020 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, Annual Action Plan. And if our Assistant City Manager, Emily Moserelli, would be willing to give us a little update here.
Absolutely. So, happy to give an overview. So, this is actually to our CDBG-CV funds. So, these are COVID-specific, and these were specifically tied to the city's COVID money through entitlement. So, they're very restricted in what they could be used for. We had originally set out a plan to assist with rent utilities as well as kind of food boxes to food pantries. So, we have been working with Meals on Wheels, and we were working with a nonprofit to do the rent utility assistance. At this point, we had kind of let that money sit in the rent and utility pot, but we are looking at, or proposing, and what's in front of you is to move any remaining money from that rent utility assistance to the COVID-related portions of the Norwood Fire Station removal, or renovation. It's very difficult now, four years out of the pandemic, to tie the need for rent utility assistance to COVID. And so, again, all of these monies do have to be tied to COVID. We are still doing our food box program that we do at Hazel's House. I think there's actually another one Saturday. But this particular program reallocates those funds from the original rent utility assistance program and moves those to the Norwood Fire Station. Happy to answer any other questions.
Is there a motion, and then we'll entertain questions?
Move to approve. Second.
Thank you. And if you would, did you have questions?
Me? I can ask questions.
No, 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 I do, I do have questions. I just wanted to make sure that anybody else had. So, explain a little bit what type of items qualify?
Absolutely. So, this particular fund is because we are typically a CDBG entitlement community. So, that is where our, what we've been getting for many years, our CDBG funds came out of back when they passed the CARES Act before ARPA. CARES actually allocated money to municipalities to help in the response to COVID and the impacts that they were having on their community. And they based the number that communities got based on their entitlement funds that they normally get. So, this is through HUD. So, it could be really a very wide assortment of things that these funds can be used for tied to COVID. So, it could have been if you were buying cleaning equipment, masks, if you had to buy equipment to be able to do remote meetings, things like that. A lot of that could have been done under that, those funds. There was a subset that, you know, if you were setting up clinics to do COVID testing. So, we're lucky in our community that we had a lot of other groups that were working on those things already. So, when we set that up, we really felt that maybe the nonprofits would have an influx of need from the community, which is how we set it up in the first place. We did go through the process with our rent utility assistance and food feeding program, or food box program with several organizations, and then worked closely with another organization to do that. There's a lot of documentation and paperwork on the backend that's needed to kind of list how it's tied to COVID. Maybe someone's immunocompromised, that they're getting the food box program, meet other criteria. So, one of the things that we were able to work both, so this is the city's entitlement, but the state also, we got an entitlement from them. One of the things that we've worked through up till this point and have been an eligible project is the portions of our Norwood Fire Station remodel that are getting clean air into the facilities, that separate the bunk rooms, the, some of the decontamination areas. So, a lot of those parts of the renovation were able to be covered under COVID by being able to limit the spread of any kind of communicable diseases in kind of a congregate living, especially in emergency personnel, who we want to be able to help others when they're in need, so.
I was hoping you were gonna say that. Because that was a concern and a reality was when you don't have separate bunk room, when you don't have separate rooms for sleeping, then you can pass on.
Same here.
All right, thank you. What organization were we working with for the rent and utility assistance?
That was working with United Way.
I'm just, I don't know, I guess I'm shocked that we didn't go through more of that money because I work with the social services pretty frequently. And still, now, we're like, when we're having conversations about our homelessness issues, they'll say, well, it was really exacerbated by COVID. But then, we're saying like, we didn't use the majority of our money for, for rent and utility assistance. So, I was just-
Yes, we work with them pretty closely. I think there's probably a lot more red tape to this money than maybe some of the social services are used to. We had to have a lot of documentation, prior paychecks, what those people's lease agreements were. The lease agreements had to be a certain amount. We had to have letters from their landlords, so there was-
So, they made it extraordinarily difficult to use it for that purpose.
It was not the easiest program to administer. We did help quite a few people with that rent and utility assistance program. It also limited as to how many months that it could be applicable to someone. And it could only be really for backed rent owed, it couldn't be going forward. So, again, yes, lots of red tape with these federal funds.
All right, is there anyone else?
Yeah, I mean, I think there's still obviously a huge need for back utility payments and back rent payments. So, when this was administered, as a requirement of the grant, it required that sort of reporting that you're dealing-
We work closely with our HUD consultant because these, the funding through the CDG-CV funds went through HUD. So, we have a consultant that we work with to help us administer those funds. And those were all things that we were required to essentially collect. I think we also had notified the local utility companies that they had someone who was doing that. But I believe they also had some funding available through like rent and utility, especially some of the, I'm gonna call it more private utilities. They had a lot of that available.
Is there? Yeah, it's terrible when it doesn't match need, huh? Yeah.
Yeah, it's, uh... There's a, is there any other funding stream that we feel like could help be, maybe be easier to get people? Because, I don't know, it's just like, we're taking this money, and I understand there was red tape, and so that can make it just difficult to access. We don't want the money just sitting there doing nothing.
Or get returned.
But yeah, like, I guess, I, probably, the highest request that I encounter is, is for utility is, hey, I need $500 for utilities. That's also to move into a place. That happens a lot. I can't move in until I pay my water bill because I won't have water. And then, I can't move in because I won't have water.
So, those would be-
And that's before we get to everybody that has problems with deposits, which is like every time.
I think the particularly difficult thing with us was being able to tie it to COVID. It had to be that COVID was the reason why they were unable to pay. Maybe COVID shut their place of work down, and they got laid off because of COVID. Or their daycare closed, and they were no longer able to have childcare due to COVID. So, it, it, it was extra difficult. So, there probably are through standard CDVG funds or other kind of HUD programs that would allow for the prep for deposit and things like that. We still have our landlord incentive program in place that helps try to encourage landlords take individuals from the coalition to end the homelessness list to get people, to get new landlords and create those new sections. But with this particular pot of funds being tied to COVID and having that restriction on top of the other ones, kind of exacerbated the red tape.
So, do you think it may, may be a good idea for a certain social services agency of whatever kind, maybe to apply for a CDVG, regular CDVG funds for rental assistance?
I believe that our staff member who does all the CDVG funds directly contacts all of the nonprofits that we're aware of. And it is also in the newspaper encouraging people to apply for CDVG funds. But yes, and if that's something that they're, you know, interested in in the future, you know, they're welcome to sit down and meet with staff and see how some of the things that they would like to maybe get funding for may be an option for in the future.
I know Christian Help often helps with, like, first months deposit. Do they apply for CDVG based on that, or?
We've talked to Christian Help several times. They typically don't necessarily want it to go through with the program and some of the requirements that are attached to it. But they're very aware of the CDVG program, and we work with Colleen and others from there.
All right. Is there any other, all right, if you would please call the roll, clerk?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Buggonham?
Yes.
Bill Koweki?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes, passes unanimously. Consideration of approval of the Ruby Summer Concert Series alcohol vendor, our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor.
As requested, when RFP was, was posted for the alcohol vendor services for the Ruby Summer Concert Series, and it was posted on the city's website as well as it was sent directly to the downtown food and beverage vendors in, in the downtown area. The RFP closed on Thursday, February 29th at 4:00 p.m. And at that- And at that time, we had received two submissions or applicants. Those, those two were reviewed based on seven different criteria by a panel of key city staff. As a result, staff recommends that Chuck Bass Enterprises-Almost Heaven Grill be selected as the alcohol vendor for the Ruby Summer Concert Series. We're also asking that staff be directed to negotiate a contract for services and also that authorize the city manager to apply to the West Virginia Alcohol Beverage Control Administration for the necessary permits to execute that contract. Thank you.
So is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
I saw you.
Thank you. And then is there discussion?
I.
I mean, I went to eighty percent of the concerts last year and there's a lot of children that attend these concerts. And I'm not so sure selling alcohol is a good idea. That's just my opinion.
There was alcohol at the conference though. I mean beer.
I didn't see any last year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Down by the river.
Ah, I didn't go down there. I stayed up top.
No, and quite truthfully, they were very well behaved. But the truth of the matter is those concerts have been very well behaved, very well attended. And to my amazement, been very well received.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes?
I did have a particular concern that may be better discussed in like an executive session. So I may want to table this item for now, if that's appropriate, city attorney. Is this, is this one thing, is this a thing that we have one reading of?
That's correct. There would just be one action by council to authorize the contract.
I have plenty of concerns and now I am intrigued by your concerns. So I would second your motion to table.
Well, just, I, I don't know if it's one that anybody would consider that much of a concern at all. But it is one that I wanted to like talk to council about. So I just wanted to make sure I did before. But I, you know, I don't, I don't know if it's anything anybody would think is a big deal. But did want to present it to the rest of the council at some point.
Help me out here. My understanding is one of the reasons why we're doing this is that it makes the amphitheater more attractive to outside promoters. In other words, they feel as though their audience needs to have that kind of accessibility.
Certainly.
I, you know, I would find it difficult to turn this away and embrace POTA. There seems to be some sort of conflict here. And, and again, I suggest to you that the beer has been sold. And I'm aware that perhaps there are other beverages, you know, that people enjoyed the concert with that weren't particularly permitted, but weren't discouraged either. So I think here we have a better chance of regulating. And it's to the benefit of the community in terms of the kinds of activities that we can promote that spill over to the businesses downtown.
Can I clarify my concern? My concern is not selling alcohol at the amphitheater. The amphitheater is within our POTA footprint. I can buy a drink at Gibby's and carry it right down to the amphitheater if I want. That's not my concern. I have concerns with the, the awarding of this and some of the way it's done and handled that I would love to share. But I'm also intrigued by what Counselor Butcher has to say. So.
Could you expand on your concern without being?
I mean, I, I don't, I don't.
You're saying you have some sort of attorney-client concern?
No, I don't think it's necessarily something that is like, it's just something that I don't feel like it would necessarily be appropriate necessarily for, especially if we decide that it's not like a huge thing. Then I don't know if it's all that appropriate for a public meeting.
Are you wanting to wait to vote on this to the next meeting? Or are you wanting an executive session about it? Or are you wanting to consult with someone?
I think we would probably have to have an executive session if we all wanted to discuss it.
Is that really true that this would qualify as an executive session?
That would depend on the, on the subject matter.
That's my concern.
And, you know, I could, I could certainly discuss that with, with anybody who has a request about that for.
To see whether it fits under one of the.
Sure.
Exceptions to.
City manager, if we did that with waiting one or two meetings, could be a problem with the contract?
I was going to make that comment that we, we prolonged the process or the awarding. It was really a multi-year awarding. And we went ahead and issued another RFP so, so that it was, it appeared more fair and more people could respond to the RFP. It went through that process. It took some time. And now to prolong it any longer, I'd hate, I can't speak on behalf of the vendor, but if I were in their shoes, I'd want to get going on, on whatever purchases and equipment that I needed to carry out the contract, being that that series is going to be coming in a couple of months. Unless it's a major issue, you know, it's certainly something that if it needs to be disclosed to council, council and Butcher, then that can be done in an executive session. But unless it's something that would cast doubt on the ability of the panel that made that selection and, and go through the process, my, 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 my recommendation is that you move forward.
Would we be able to approve this at our committee of the whole?
If we had a special meeting beforehand, we could.
Would that be that much of a?
You're saying a week?
Yeah.
No.
I second the motion to table.
Now, if we table it, does that mean it takes an extra week or how does that work? Can we take it off the table and act on it at the same meeting?
Yes, you could do that. Either not acting tonight or laying the item on the table would be fine. There is, once an item's tabled, technically there is a, a procedure to bring it off the table and then take action on it. But neither, neither option prevents you from considering that at a special meeting on the committee of the whole day.
All right. All right. If you all would like to table, then we'll just make sure we officially on table. We have to vote on that. We don't have to, we don't have to table.
I don't want to throw a monkey wrench into this, but if there's to be an executive meeting prior to this, this vote, how are we handling that?
That would be the request.
We already have a special meeting and executive session before our next meeting. We can just add an item to the agenda to discuss.
This.
Or have a different meeting that would be that also.
We can certainly put this.
I'm not aware of that agenda, but, okay.
We could certainly do this. It's whether we're, whether we want to do this.
We have interviews for boards and commissions before our next meeting. So that's already a meeting and executive session. We could just add an agenda item.
I'm in light of the fact that they had three people review it and in light of the fact that someone has been selected through that type of a process, I'm not in favor of.
A motion to table is not debatable. It's just a call for the question. I was fine with logistical, like, when are we going to?
As to whether I would vote for or against this. And I was trying to gather information as to.
No, that's a logistical question. All right.
All right. If we're not getting to the merits, then we will have a vote on whether to table. We've already had a first and second. So now we would have a vote on whether to table this particular item. Deputy Mayor Bouganum?
Yes.
Bill Kowacki?
Sure.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Saleen? Yes. So we're now tabling. Move on to the next thing. Consideration appointment of POTA committee members. And I imagine we might have some sort of a recommendation. Do you have the recommendation?
I know who is being recommended. If.
That could be part of a motion if you would like to do that.
Okay. Should I make it all in one motion?
Probably unless somebody would.
Attorney Simonson is nodding at me. So I would move that council approve myself as the city council representative on the POTA selection committee. Main Street Morgantowns representative as Steve Bennett for the POTA selection committee. Alcohol-related business owners as Grace Hutchins and Stephen Wilson. And non-alcohol-related business owners as Stephanie Swaim and Shannon Dowling to, for the POTA application review committee, whatever we're going to call that.
Do you want to make reference to their businesses or just to their person is fine?
I was going to ask if you could just say who they're tied to.
So the alcohol-related businesses would be Grace Hutchins. She owns Apothecary. She owns Deckers Creek Yacht Club. She owns Zeeks and she owns Blue Moose. Stephen Wilson is the proprietor of Morgantown Art Bar. And he has been a POTA advocate with us from the beginning. Stephanie Swaim is owner of Hoot and Howl and Euphorbia as a non-alcohol-related business. And Shannon Dowling is the proprietor of River Fair Trade as a non-alcohol-related business.
Great. Thanks.
And all those recommendations came to us, I think, through Main Street too, just to give you some extra validity.
Just to make it, make it, make it known. Now, that does not preclude, some of those are our, a couple of those are our nominations. Are they all, I mean, we have the right to nominate some of those. But I have not heard any other.
Main Street was asked for, city council gets a, a representative and Main Street gets a representative. So I'm requesting that council allow me to be our representative. And Main Street has said that Stephen Bennett, Steve Bennett, will be their representative. Attorney Simonson and the POTA committee had asked Main Street for some recommendations on the other representatives. They are, by no means do we have to take them. They are just recommendations, not necessarily.
And they are good recommendations by my, by my view. I'm just wanting to make it clear that we would have the power if there's somebody else that somebody wanted.
In the future, if someone were to step down, how would that go about? What's the process for that?
City council would reappoint someone, right?
Yes, I believe these are year-long appointments that you, that you'll have to make again. I'll actually have to check your ordinance on that.
Good question.
Not that I have any problem. I'm a huge fan of the art bar. So I'm excited to see Stephen Wilson be part of this.
He was an early supporter and, no, they're all wonderful. I just want to make clear.
Yeah, it's not against anyone else. I have no.
Those are, yeah, those are wonderful recommendations. So.
If that was a motion, I'll second.
Thank you. I'm hoping that was a motion. Because it took, it took a while. Pardon. All right. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Sounds like a good crew.
Yeah.
Yes, it does.
Yeah. This is just the committee to, in order for a business to be approved for a POTA license, they have to first get city approval and then go to the ABCA with that, with that letter of approval. And this would be the committee who would be looking at applications and determining whether or not they get city approval. And Attorney Simonson and other city staff has been working on some, like the application and guidelines and things that these businesses would have to follow.
Great. All right. So we have a slate. If there's someone that wants to say something about that, this is our moment. And otherwise, we could vote for them all at once?
Yes, ma'am.
So if you would please call the. Deputy Mayor Bouganum?
Yes.
Bill Kowacki?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Saleen? Yes. Passes unanimously. Now we're on to city manager's report.
I don't have anything tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Report from the city clerk.
Yes.
I'm so tired of looking at this. I wanted to just for a minute.
One second. I have to gather my notes. Okay, so I've been talking about police entry-level exams and for a long, long time. And we finally had the exam. So I wanted to let everyone know what, what the outcome was. Originally, we had twenty applications. Three applicants withdrew prior to the test. Eight folks showed up and took the test. And out of the eight, four passed the written exam. So they also took the agility exam and interviews were handled by the Police Civil Service Commission that day. And from what I understand, it went well. So just wanted to fill you in on that. We will be testing again in June. We don't have that date yet, but once we have that date, we'll push that out to everyone. Also, on Saturday, March 16th, the Police Civil Service Commission held sergeant's promotional exam. And I'm excited to share that Joseph Bridges, one of the officers, was promoted, will be promoted to sergeant after a successful five-day review and medical exam. So congratulations to him. And then lastly, the Morgantown Fire Civil Service Commission, in conjunction with the Morgantown Fire Department, will be hosting an agility open house for prospective firefighter candidates on Saturday, April 6th, beginning at 10:00 AM. This event will take place at the North Side Fire Station located at 1,000 Van Vors Road. And for those who wish to participate in the open house, they can email me or go to our website. There is a job interest form that can be found on the city's Morgantown Fire Department page. About 175 emails were sent out to those folks who have expressed interest in firefighter, being a firefighter in the last two years. And then to some local groups and whatnot to share the information. Our folks in the communications center, they posted that on the city's website, on the fire department page. The fire department or the city's LinkedIn page, the city's Facebook page. So we're getting that out and folks have already responded. So take a look, share that information if you can. I sent an email to you all as to what was sent out to lots of folks. So you can share that whenever you can. We'll get the information out as much as we can. Oh, there's a, there's a link on the email that I sent out and the, and the posting. There, there's a link to the, to the YouTube video that kinda shows folks what the agility open house is all about and what you might have to do, or what you will have to do if you attend the testing, so.
Nice.
Yeah. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. City attorney?
Thank you, mayor. As Councilor Trumbull mentioned, there are many city staff working to implement the private outdoor designated area by its planned start date for May fifteenth. Our GIS staffer, Marvin Davis, is working on a landing page for the district that will give patrons and businesses information. Development Services Director has begun working on an application form with council's appointment of that committee to review applications tonight. We can get that process in place, so hopefully interested businesses can begin to apply and get their applications together to the Alcohol Beverage Control Administration. We're also in progress on a logo and design and a vendor for cups that will be used in the district. There has been state legislation adopted changing the requirements for those districts. So we anticipate bringing in a revised ordinance to council next month to incorporate those revisions into your own authorizing ordinance. And so we're on our way. Also, with the end of the legislative session, trying to track other state legislation impacting municipalities, there was some zoning related legislation passed, in part involving approval procedures for planning commission actions. So for items like that, we'll try to work with staff and look at any updates the city needs to make, either in its own ordinances or just operationally to address those. That is all I have to report this evening.
Thank you. Reports from city council.
I can...
Are you wanting to make a report?
You want me to start?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I, I don't really have a lot. I did wanna maybe get on record about some issues we had this morning with ICE. It's on a state level. We had thirty-eight accidents and unfortunately a fatality. And I just wanted to get that on record, that it's just unacceptable, that it wasn't pretreated. And it mostly occurred on all our bridges. So this happened between five-thirty AM to ten-thirty. So I just want that on record. That's all I have today, thanks.
Thank you. And Wheeze called the governor's office to give them an earful about it.
I was very nice.
She was great.
I really, I was really nice and concerned and I took it from a first responder's perspective. And it's just unacceptable and we need help. And I gotta tell you, they responded quickly. I got several emails from the governor's office and they, they began a report on the accidents. And, and I also mentioned that this happened three months ago.
Sure did.
That caused us to, and I did not tell them I was a city councilor. I just told them I was a citizen and a first responder.
Well, now you're, now you're mentioning as the city councilor as well.
I think I got so involved and excited that they were listening to me.
You didn't, you didn't give out all your qualifications.
Yeah, I didn't. Anyway, it's just something really important and we really have to, you know, get people to listen to us. It's, it's just, it's gotta, we have, we have to have our roads in this county and our surrounding counties taken care of better, so.
Yeah, it's horrible.
Yeah, but, yeah, so.
Deputy Mayor Boog Adam?
Uh, yeah, I don't have too much to report since I was gone. And the reason I was gone is I got to attend the first National League of Cities Conference. So that was really fun, exciting, and I learned a whole bunch of stuff and have a, sorry. I had attended the National League of Conference and had an opportunity to learn a lot and gain a lot of experience and meet a lot of wonderful people. In addition to hanging out with all my fellow counselors while we were there, I would also like to add to those watching at home that our next neighborhood meeting is March twenty-fifth. And if you're a member of the First Ward, to try to make sure that you can attend. It will be at M-Tech as usual. The room will not be posted until the night of. Make sure you come so you can hear about all the wonderful happenings and going-ons of our First Ward neighborhood. As we'll be discussing some landscaping, trees in Jack Roberts Park. And also, we will be planning our yearly yard sale, which we have tentatively penciled in for June eighth. And that concludes my report. Thank you all for watching this evening.
It's, like the camera.
Thank you.
Never mind, thank you. Actually, I have very little to report. I do have some concerns. A number of our meetings have been canceled or postponed. I really put a high value on neighborhood participation. And our boards and commissions are really, I think, extremely valuable in terms of keeping council working in the right direction and making sure that the community is really heard. So I, I am disappointed when those activities are curtailed. And I do hope that we will do more to make sure that they are promoted. I mean, as an administration, that we do more to make sure that they are promoted. The, the one observation I will make to, just kinda thank the DOH for doing the patchwork that they did last month. But I am surprised to find that the railroad tracks on Route seven are again exposed.
It just pops back up.
It's absolutely amazing that, and the Walnut Street Bridge seems to have a hole in the concrete. Those are things I find difficult to accept. I do appreciate their initial attempt. I do hope that we can come up with better solutions. And that's the end of my report.
Councilor Trumbull? You should tell Wheeze about it. She'll call the governor's office and get him on it.
By all means.
I've been really nice to him, so.
I, well, unfortunately, the Bow Park meeting this month was postponed because the mayor and I were each out of town last week. But Bow Park will meet tomorrow. I wanted to make that announcement because it is not our normal day. Bow Park will meet tomorrow at the Marilla Center at three PM. We also have our first of this go-round of the Ward and Boundary Commission meeting tomorrow at one o'clock. And I'm happy to report to council that the Urban Landscape Commission will be meeting for the first time in a really long time after our recent appointment of another member. We're meeting next Wednesday. So we are, we are getting some of them back on track, counselor. I'm sorry?
What time?
The Urban Landscape Commission will meet at the Public Safety Building on Wednesday, March twenty-seventh at five PM.
Do you have a sign on your agenda?
Uh, I have two signs on my agenda. His and yours.
I have to make sure I have the timeline down.
No, no.
Not mine, 'cause we don't, yeah.
His and Dave's.
What time again?
Five o'clock.
We wish it was ours.
We'll get there. We'll be there soon.
Yes, Greenmont and First Ward are supposed to be on that agenda. Yeah, I've been out of town, but I, let me tell you. You, you go to a conference and the work at home doesn't stop. It just, it doesn't even pause for you. I've taken many calls and many meetings and, and been working, as I'm sure at least a few others of you have, since we were here just two weeks ago. And we raised concerns for the first time, I guess publicly maybe, that Bartlett House had lost a portion of their funding. And I, I was concerned that that would indicate a closure or some... Less than two weeks later, they are now closed to new clients. They are working to try to find placement for all of their current clients. But as of last Friday, they are no longer accepting any new clients. I don't know if you all noticed today or not, but it was snowing. And we, we had people who were struggling to find, to find shelter, so. We need to make sure this is something that we are all paying attention to. This does create an emergency in our community with our unsheltered numbers. Again, Bartlett House is intending, at least at this time, to keep their other services open, some of their transitional and permanent supportive housing, especially those that are housed at their West Run facility. But that twenty-eight-bed triage shelter at Hazel's House of Hope is, is soon to be no more. It's my understanding that the governor's office did extend an offer to reinstate some of that funding. It is yet to be determined if that will make any type of difference in their timeline or not. But at this time, they are closed and they are having a lot of internal organizational transition, we will call it. I'm sure there will be more in that in the Dominion Post tomorrow, as I already see articles about it. Just keep it on your radar. I think that, I spoke with a few individuals today and there is a need for a caseworker or two to really help some of these people who are presenting at the Bartlett House to find alternative shelter or to find alternative placement, whether that's in another shelter, whether that's with family, whether that's trying to get them into more permanent types of housing. And I'm sure Councilor Butcher will likely have more thoughts on that. He works much more closely with that type of thing than, than I do. But, yeah, we're already a couple of days in experiencing some of the, some of the fallout of that shelter closing. And we need to, to make sure we have a plan moving forward. As such, I would like to bring it to everyone's attention. I've been talking to a lot of people lately about what we would do for a warming shelter for next winter because we cannot assume that sobering center space would be available. We obviously cannot assume that Bartlett House will be doing this. I personally would like to see us finish out our budget season. I would like to see the county finish out their budget season this month and maybe in April. And I've talked to at least one county commissioner and several nonprofit heads and the assistant city manager about this. But I think that it would behoove us to put out an RFP for a warming shelter to tell people, here's potential funding that we could have available. Come to us with your plans now. We tried this last year at this time. When the warming shelter closed last year, we got representatives from different organizations started meeting last April. I would like to see a more formal process. Really put it out there and say, bring us your ideas now so that we have time to work on it. I think an RFP is the way to go. There are other communities that have done this. I just wanted to make council aware that that's something that I would like to look into and I'll be working on over the next several weeks. And especially trying to get the county on board with that because they have recently, or, I mean, at different times, we have each gave funding to an emergency warming shelter. And I think that getting the municipalities and the county together and putting out an RFP may be our best shot for next year since, since what we've used in the last few years. It likely won't be an option. The only other thing I'd like to address is the free bus line that I also brought up at the last city council meeting. Since then, I know that the mayor's had a few conversations. Members of the Morgantown Community Resources Board have had a few conversations internally and also with the mountain line. And the cost of that bus line is going up, 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 up. They anticipate, based on numbers to date, that by the end of this fiscal year, they will be well over eighty thousand rides, which would put us at a bill of sixty-five thousand dollars or so for next year. And I, as I said two weeks ago, I don't know where that's going to come from. Our social services funding is being cut. Everyone is struggling. Everyone is trying to stretch their dollars. And I would love nothing more than to see the city pull back a little of our yearly allocation and keep that tight to, to help pay some of this bill, this unexpectedly high cost. And I guess it's not completely unexpected. We're still a couple of months out from owing it and they were kind enough to give us a heads up because we asked this time. But it is, it is ever-increasing because it is such a popular bus route. And we need to figure out where the funding for that is going to come from. Because if you're going to try to wring it out of some of the local social services, it's just not gonna come. Other than that, I, yeah, that's probably enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
For those that were able to attend the National League Cities Conference, I'm glad you were able to. And as somebody that wasn't, happy to see we had four representatives. So thank you all for being able to attend that. Last week, it was learned that the Monreal Trail Conservancy received a two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand-dollar congressionally-directed spending award that can, it was gonna be targeted towards repaving. But we may have some flexibility on how that's used if we feel there's another need that can be, be used first. And thank you to Steve for his assistance in getting that through and, and to us. So that, that was really exciting. That's great. I'm happy to see the, the Marilla Park pool construction rolling along. I just live a few hundred yards above the construction site and I'm able to listen and see...
Now you can, now you can tell us about it.
The progress. And it's really, the progress has really taken off right now, so that's cool to see. Look forward to that project being completed next summer. A, a little bit of an update with the Morgantown Utility Board meeting of last week. And we heard from the city attorney, Tim Serenko of Westover, kinda outlining the steps that need to happen before that project comes back to us as potentially taking it over for the city with MUB being responsible for the sewage. And so the two main projects need to happen are new sewer line under Holland Avenue and a lift station. The Holland Avenue will happen first, the lift station second. And it's projected that both those projects will be completed probably late spring of next year. And his proposal was, because MUB already does a lot of the operations and maintenance for the city of Westover and then bills for that, that we, at some point soon, MUB enter a contract with Westover for the operation and maintenance agreement. But the transition to acquisition of the Westover system does not occur until completion of these projects, which would be late spring of next year. I asked if he would put that on paper and outline it for us to, to have so that I could share with our city council. And so that, that should be forthcoming. So that, that's sort of the status of that. And this being our next-to-last meeting, county commission chambers.
Is that true?
Through April?
We got a whole number more.
Oh, I thought it was... Oh. I would've thought it was until April.
It was until you said that.
Oh, wow. Disregard, disregard.
I was like, what?
All construction projects, do more weeks.
I know.
It's been...
It's really disappointing. It's really something.
Leadership Academy will not get to do their graduation in our own building.
Oh, man.
You do it outside, though?
If things go well and we can get you in there, but...
This is how it takes longer.
Hold on, but I have...
It's like, stop talking about it. We have given the county the official, by May one, we will not be...
By May one, okay.
If we are able to get you in sooner, we will. But that is the date that we are giving them.
Well, we've appreciated the years that we've been here. It just seems that way.
It does, it does. So beautiful.
We really do appreciate it. It's just nice to have your own digs.
I am very much looking forward to it. Our staff is anxiously awaiting a moving back in to...
I'm sure.
But even then, we have to push back a little.
Yeah, so, um, as Councilwoman Trumbull has said, like, um, the triage shelter at Bartlett closed on Friday. Personally, I've been in contact with six individuals since then seeking shelter. That's an influx, probably. One a day is not, not typical for, you know, me personally. I, I think, I think we had talked about this before privately, but just publicly I'll say, the ideal was to try to get these people resourced around the state with different places they could go. That's not working out. So everywhere, everywhere we're looking is, is full, including Charleston. We did have someone go to Charleston, I believe, late last week. And that's a, you know, tapped them out after that. So, um, it is a, a bit of a dire situation in terms of, of what's going on there. The hotel program that I help oversee is, uh, it will have funding. It's probably going to be a good two to three to four weeks before that happens. We've already been waiting about six months for a portion of this funding, but that's how funding goes. And so I, I think the other bottleneck that we're running into really heavily is a lack of case management, which I think you had kind of talked about. You know, our coalition caseworkers already had a, a full caseload. And then we had kind of relied on, you know, Bartlett or other services to, to provide case management there. You know, as we talk about a lot, is whenever there's a deficiency in one agency, that tends to trickle down to everybody else. And so the biggest thing I, I, I'm, I'm facing now is even if we had hotel dollars open up, it's really difficult to place people in hotels without a prior, prior history of case management. Because if we do, we run a high risk of, of somebody not being appropriate for a hotel space and therefore risking the entire project wholesale. But that's also irrespective of, of that, trying to get people placed when they may be in an extremely high-risk situation without things like a VSPADA, which is like kind of a, you can think of it as a risk assessment for individuals conducted on them, HMI-S coordination, things of that nature being done, it's really difficult. I'm not a caseworker. I don't have expertise in that. And so that's been a huge bottleneck, I, because in the past I've relied so much on caseworkers from the community. Now they're kind of all at capacity, the ones we might have relied on with Bartlett House are not there. So one thing I would maybe encourage this council to look at or consider is, well, for one, I think that we need to have some kind of joint meeting with the county to discuss this issue. And perhaps service providers, perhaps just us in the county, maybe two separate meetings that are going to do both. Because I do, I think it's fortunate now that we're kind of seeing this in the community as, as a crisis. And again, it is more of a, a larger burden for everybody to bear. But I mean, you know, we're 152 people into this homeless population and we just had a shelter of 28 beds shut down. It was, it was a crisis before and something that we were dealing with before. It's just that now, if, for instance, just today, and I was talking about this earlier before the meeting, was like, we had somebody sent here from Pittsburgh because they were full in Pittsburgh at these other shelters. And they thought, well, so in Morgantown, they often have room. And so then we're kind of left trying to figure, and this was a, a high-risk individual, trying to figure out how to house them. So, uh, yeah, I, I, and so I would encourage like a, a joint kind of meeting to, to get a handle on the situation along with service providers. And then I would maybe think about if Bartlett, I guess the first place to go would be determining if Bartlett has the capacity to, to, if they had the funding for an employee for at least the next six months or something of that nature, if we could help them with funding to get an employee that does case management. I feel like, again, that's a huge bottleneck, at least I'm seeing right now. And I'm in conversation with other service providers like Health Right, that is also a bottleneck that they are facing. And I know Coalition is also facing that with full caseload with their current caseworkers. And, and I, I think like that case management, there's also going to be a problem with Bartlett House and their funding that we're not necessarily talking about where it wasn't like the biggest proportion, but there is a proportion of people that were, that went to the emergency shelter that were then put, placed into their other programs. And so that stream of individuals is now cut off. So it, it may also be good in order to, you know, keep programmatic, the, the programmatic lens flowing, to have, if, if they have the capacity or feel like they could do it, to have case management and see if we could help them with funding for that or whatever, logistics or whatever they may need for it.
Brian, as long as you're talking about funding, can you touch on the, uh, the audit funding that they may also need? Because I failed, I forgot about that.
Uh, yeah, my, I'm, I'm not a board member, I'm not a staff member. My understanding is that they still need $50,000 to conduct an audit, which is also...
From 22.
Right. Which is also a reason why they didn't get some of the previous grants, other than the most recent one. Like some of these, a lot of grants, require you to have a financial audit. In order for you to receive a grant, you will be just wholesale disqualified should you not have the audit. Or at least, like, you know, that's 25 points out of 100, and so all of a sudden you're that far behind if you don't have it. So that was a large reason. So, yeah, they do, definitely do need that money for the audit. I don't know what's going on with other logistical issues that they have and, and how that's, that needs going to be met. But suffice it to say, no matter what is the future of Bartlett, we have to consider the future of the city and how we're going to approach this moment. And, and so, you know, those are my humble suggestions as of now and some things that I think that we can work on in the immediate future, if not longer down the road. Next, we have a neighborhood meeting on Thursday at 7:00 PM where we will be talking about signs. I have three submissions for sign design from three different local artists. They're all very cool people that do good work in the community. And so, um, you know, we'll go over those, see what people think about those submissions and hopefully, um, you know, get something together in the next couple of months and Suncrest will finally have a, a sign. That'd be really great. I believe Matt's also planning on having the volunteer fire department from Star City. They're going to come speak about some of the issues they're having and stuff like that. I also wanted to, um, in closing, thank Public Works and the City Engineer. So when it rained real bad, I believe it was last week, there were some cutouts that Dominion Hope had done in, um, on my street and they had kind of collapsed a little bit. There was a lot of water building up in those and I just, they have been working pretty diligently. And I mean, Damian, I must have been texting back and forth with him like 20 or 30 times about this because I kept getting pictures from neighbors and that, but he was very responsive and, and I appreciate him doing that and, and being responsive to me. And then I got an email from Drew today about them reaching out to the utility company just about fixing some of those issues. So they've been on top of it and that's, I really appreciate that. Just wanted to show my appreciation for, uh, city staff in that instance. And that will conclude my report. Thank you.
Can I ask you about trash pickup?
Anytime.
Was, how was trash pickup in your, in your...
It's been good so far, yeah. I know we had like an early pickup two weeks ago, but that was two weeks ago.
But it's being picked up right now? I'm not, not saying anything about the future right now.
Being picked up, yeah.
Good.
We had that one miss and then it was early and then it's been good past two weeks, so.
Okay. So as far as caseworkers and case management goes, this is, I know a lot of these things more secondhand than maybe you all know more primary. Is the coalition still providing the same level of care, same level of case management that they had been before?
Yeah, as far as I'm aware, yeah. In my experience, yes.
And then, um, if we're going to put out a request for proposal for, um, winter shelter, it seems like we should be, since we do not have some, anyone providing services for emergency shelter, we should be putting out a request, potentially putting out a request for proposals for emergency shelter since we're going to need that before we get to the cold.
Yeah, that's a...
Whether that's a response by Bartlett or by someone else, since it's closed, we would need to know who's going to do what next and putting out a request for proposals would be a proactive step. It's just one person mentioning. And then before this happened, we already had problems because we didn't have housing vouchers for most popul, most of the population as well, who just seemed to have quite issues.
I think that at least some of those were renewed at the beginning of the year.
A lot, a lot of them opened up, yeah. We had a lot of people that, um, uh, got, got on that list. And just another problem with that is, especially having Bartlett House closed, is that, uh, most of those people get written notification that's sent to an address.
Yeah, they need an address. Yeah, yep.
So then we wait for a long time for people to get projected.
Putting, having a joint meeting with the county and coming up with some sort of a request for emergency shelter as well as a cold weather shelter would be useful at this point. And that's enough about that right now, but it is a crisis. And, um, and I can see where we would need case management to get people to where they need to go. I think a couple of other people here have made other kind of suggestions that we should all discuss at some point. I wanted to mention that there is, this is a mention well ahead of time, but, um, I'm part of, we're all part of Region Six, uh, and they, as far as helping with employment issues. And so this Region Six has an American Job Senator Partner Network event on, um, May, on May 10th. And it happens to be in Fairmont, but this is a whole region, including multiple counties in our area. And so they're having this thing that's called Empower Fest 2024, but it's a speed hiring event. It's not a traditional job fair. They're actually hiring. So employers who are wanting to engage in this need to actually have a job available. They're not just filling their coffers with people who they could potentially call. So anyway, I'm going to put this on the record and maybe post it a few places, but you're supposed to email Tracy Kennedy at TKennedy@RegionSixWB.org. And so if there are employers that are interested, it's May 10th. If there are employers that are interested, and it's located at the Disability Action Center, which is on Leonard Avenue in Fairmont. But this seems to be very effective. I've attended this quite a few times and it seems to be a very effective group and worth people's time if they are an employer or someone looking for employment. I also very much appreciated getting to participate with the National League of Cities. We met with Capitol Office, we met with Manchin's Office, we met with the Transportation Department. And we found people with West Virginia connections everywhere, which was kind of fun. Even with the Department of Transportation, uh, which was just wonderful to come in and see somebody who had, used to work in Manchin's Office be right there and welcoming us. So I really appreciated the opportunity and, um, and the fact that four council members were willing to go. And I know that others might have been willing except for they needed to keep their gainful employment. So, so, so I, I think that we were an effective group. I think that there's always a few bumps, a few bumps along the way and lots of opportunities on the way. And I've been sending out emails to follow up on things that we did get to say and also to say things that we didn't get to say as part of the process because we're going around in a group and we need to support other communities as well as get support for our own projects. So we were, um, we were a, a, a well-known and, and effective group, I thought. So I appreciate everyone's contributions. I think that we, um, we made, we definitely, we definitely made an impact. So that's enough for me and I think it's time to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
All right, done.